All right, this is the Committee of the Hall. This is Thursday, February 7, 2019, we're at 6:00 PM. I have Councilor Capone.
Here.
I have Councilor De La Sola.
Here.
I have Councilor De Perro.
Here.
I have Councilor Hanlon.
Here.
I have Councilor Matusky.
Here.
I have Councilor De Politano.
Here.
And I have Councilor Semenelli.
Here.
And I have Councilor McGlaughlin. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you. Stand up, salute the flag, please.
The United States of America, to the Republic which stands in our nation under God, in the Constitution of Justice.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we spend the rules and take item number two?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
All right. Item number two, this is resolved by Councilor McGlaughlin, that the administration give an immediate response to the idea of 24-hour parking sticker enforcement for Ward 1 and Ward 6 due to casino patrons possibly taking up residential parkas' spots in these specific
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we invite up our invited guest, Joanne Gregory, Parkin Clerk, Mr. O'Donnell, and Sergeant Gaff from Traffic.
All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Just please state your name and your position.
Joanne Gregory, Parkin Clerk, City of Everett.
Sergeant Sergeant Gaff, Commander of the Traffic Unit.
Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff, Mayor De Maria.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you guys for appearing tonight. I thought this was very needed to have this discussion. We know that in just a short amount of time, we're going to open up historically the largest development in the state history in our city. And I'm really concerned about people that are going to flood into Everett to use this facility, are going to park along Main Street or along Broadway down between Ward 1 and Ward 6. They should have said Ward 5, and I apologize if I lost meaning that I didn't include that. But you're going to park down on whatever street on Main Street and take a $2 or $3 Uber ride over to the casino, and you're going to spend the day playing at the casino, and you're going to have a parking spot. To be able to try to at least jump ahead of it a little bit, I thought that it was time to have the discussion about how we are able to curb that to protect the residents in the city and also the business owners, so that you can still continue to do business and live amongst our city. You know, these individuals both live in the city, you can imagine they wouldn't be able to park in front of their house when they got home at the end of the day, at the end of the shift, if it's the middle of the day. I know we do a great job at nighttime of moving cars that don't belong here, but I think we need to start to think about the same process for daytime. If you have some advice, Mr. O'Donnell.
Yeah, so we agree, and we spoke with the mayor earlier in the week, and we were just hoping to gather some more information from other cities and towns and see what we could do, because we want to have the minimal impact on the businesses as much as possible as well. And for example, you know, the city of Boston, although they have the 24-hour parking around some of their more congested business districts, they have two or three spots on each street for two-hour parking and things like that. So we want to gather all of that type of information so we can have a minimal impact. But we do know that it's going to be an issue when the residents and the businesses do come for us in terms of, you know, as opposed, not that visitors aren't welcome, however, but, you know, we don't want people being, you know, shut out of a parking spot even for 24 hours. I mean, because we can envision a scenario where someone will come down and take that $2 or $3 Uber ride and then decide to stay overnight type of, you know, like there's a lot of moving parts in there. But, I mean, you know, just using myself as an example, I know there's a restaurant I frequented on Main Street on a weekly basis, and it's, I'm sure most of you probably have seen me there several times. But, you know, oftentimes, I do have to park on a side street as well, because, you know, Main Street is pretty congested. So we want to, you know, work together collectively and get all the information coming, come up with a cognitive plan that would, you know, work out best for everybody.
I mean, and I know that you guys are concerned about it. I know that I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to his health. I know that this is a combined effort to be able to do something. You know, as you raised, the point is still done, you could park there one morning, take the $25 ticket that you're going to get overnight, and stay there all night, stay there till the next day, and then, you know, move your car in 36 hours from now, and you've acquired a $25 parking ticket, it's a lot cheaper than paying...
Yeah, you beat the system.
A lot cheaper than paying parking at the casino site, or, you know, surrounding lot, or whatever the case might be. We don't see that now, because we don't, you know, but with all these new people coming into this city, it's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
When do you think that we will be able to see some answers or some ideas from the administration? Because again, this is right around the corner, you know, everybody thinks, but it really is.
I mean, I feel we could possibly, with working together, and, you know, before we close out, I'd like to have some input from Sergeant Gaff and Ms. Gregory as well. But, you know, it's an ongoing process that began Monday, so it really shouldn't take us long. I mean, I would imagine by the next committee meeting, if that's the will of the council or however, it won't be a long drawn-out process.
Okay. And then, you know, then you need to talk, you know, staff, and I know there's a lot that's going to go into this, so that's why the ball kind of needs to get rolling now to try to figure out the plan to be able to come up with. But I'd like to hear from both of these other individuals, and I'll yield the floor to my colleagues. Thanks for so long.
Well, I know, on behalf of the chief, I spoke to him a little bit today on this, and I know the chief and the mayor's office has been speaking about this. It's a plan that we're going to have to come up with, definitely in those wards, the village area, and then down Lower Broadway, definitely. But we just got to be very careful of making sure we take care of our residents with guests coming over for nights. And I know we strictly have that weekend policy, we don't enforce residential parking on the weekends, but that's going to be the biggest part of the casino part, is on the weekends. So that's something that's going to have to be addressed with guest parking for residents on the weekend, but we also have to be knowing that that's the busiest time for the casino. So I think we do have to take that into consideration, and also we do have to take consideration of the restaurants, the bars that we have in this city, to make sure we don't crush them with the residential parking, because obviously, that's their biggest nights also, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night is their biggest, some function halls that we have in Everett. We have to really take a hard look at this and make sure that we put it in the right area, put the right word in that we protect our residents, our residents, guests that come over for weekends, and the business owners that are in our city. I wish it was just as easy as putting up a sign and that's the end of it, but I think we have to take a hard look to protect everybody. And the other thing, it's great to put signs up and all that, but we've got to make sure that we have the staffing and everybody to enforce it, because when we put signs up, the number one thing that we have to do is make sure we are able to enforce what's there. So I think that's where we're all on board right now, that we're coming up with it, and I believe that would have to be an order, and that has to be changed. I don't think that's through the Traffic Commission to do that. So I think that would have to come up through here. And I know that the chief, the mayor's officer are definitely on it, and hopefully we'll get a group together and we'll present something.
I agree with what they both said. My idea is that as long as we get enough advertisement out there for our residents so that they're aware of what's going on, and like Sergeant Gaff said, we make sure that they have a guest pass, if they have, if they're taking care of their elderly mother, and they have to stay there overnight. Those are the things that we have to really talk about. What type of passes are we going to have? How many are we going to give? And things of that nature. We did, we do do it on a few streets up at, around the hospital, and we really haven't had too many issues there. So I don't see any problems, as long as we get it done right, it should all go smooth.
I think one of the other objects that we have to face is, do you color code them? You know, we have that one color, one color sticker for every resident, so that means it's, you know, "I live in Everett," or, "One of you guys living in Everett, you can't go park down the other end of the City of Everett, you're already paying, you know, excise tax." Are you able to park in the other part of the city? I mean, that's something else that has to be addressed. You know? So, I mean, that's something that, you know, can residents park anywhere in the city they want or just in their ward? I mean, that's something else that we have to discuss on that issue also, because I think that will be a big issue also.
Thank you.
But I think the biggest thing is, we'll be the workers, the workers down the casino, and I think they'll have their own parking spots, which they're garner, and I think that's the one area that if we strictly enforce, I think we'll be okay with that, and having the proper signage up. But if that's what we're thinking, leaning towards 24-hour parking, there is some things we have to work out. Staffing, get the word out, signage. You know, we just don't want to put signs up on trees, and we want to make it to look nice down there. A lot of money is being spent down there to make the areas look nice, and we just don't want to throw signs up, just to throw them up. So got to make sure we coordinate with the DBW, make sure, you know, when you drive down the street, it's just been done over, that it looks nice, and it's readable, and it's done right.
I'll say, Councilor? Councilor Politano?
Thank you. Well, again, I'm glad to hear there's some discussion going on. I know each of you personally, I know your capabilities. But, so Don, I'm a little disappointed to hear that the discussions are just now starting. And the reason I say that is that when this body had the discussion with the WIN group, with Boston Harbor Encore Group regarding the parking, they made it clear that the reason they were doing the parking lots across the street were because there's expecting an overabundance of traffic as people try to assess, you know, try to get used to the boat, the shuttles, and all the other resources that they're putting in place to try to, you know, get people to the casino without them having to bring their own cars. And this body, several members, myself included, expressed concerns about the fact that, you know, with our transportation coming right down Broadway, it's a natural for someone to tuck their car over at Glendale Park, take the bus in, and now they're just spreading that problem out. Some of our neighborhoods, mine, for example, during high school graduation, I live four blocks away, you can't find a parking space to save your life. And here we are, the casino's opening in less than five months, and we don't have something in place, and it sounds like we're just now having a conversation as a result of Councilor McGlaughlin's resolution. I mean, has there been more discussion? I mean, what is the administration's plan to alleviate excessive parking five months from now?
No, no, we've been having ongoing discussions, and we had a really, in that discussion this week, so, I mean, but we've had discussions going back a few months now, too. And, you know, again, you bring up a really good point, do we just limit it to these areas or anything? Because we are a small city, and in terms of the living space, it's only 1.8 miles of actual living space, so that's not a lot. Like, how far is this going to spread? Because you can go anywhere in Woodlawn, like you said, and park somewhere and get on a bus, get on a $5 Uber ride, as Councilor McGlaughlin said. So we're addressing the issue globally, if you will.
Yeah, and that's, I'm glad to hear that, because, right, we're our small city, we have the potential of the entire city being a parking lot.
Yes.
Because we are, our city in comparison to like a Somerville or Metford, we would be just a parking lot in there if we were to put our footprint into theirs. So that is a big concern, and, you know, where we already are overburdened by traffic, by parking, with a lack of parking spots, this is just going to get crazy. I know talking to, you know, in the various meetings I've had with the Encore people last year, you know, they're expecting people to be camping out before the casino opens. They've been watching the trends at the MGM, they've been watching some of the other trends with IKEA when that opened, and the number of people that are going to send on the city in the month of June and July is going to be ridiculous.
Oh, astronomical, absolutely.
It's going to be ridiculous. And that's not something we can put in place in the last minute.
If I may interject in that, just to put you at ease, that is a separate issue than what we're discussing here regarding the residential parking. There is already a committee together. I mean, it's just not, it's myself, Lieutenant Strong, representing the chief at these meetings. There's a whole board of 50 people, state, city, district, that meet. It's the transportation. So Mr. Funk is the transportation director for WIN, and there'll be that whole area regarding people outside. There will be nobody waiting outside on City of Everett property as of right now for staging and everything for that first night and everything. I believe they're talking about inside. There's going to be plenty of room inside. So there is a whole massive committee statewide that is together to work on that first night, those first couple of weeks.
I'm not so much concerned about that, because I understand that. The point I'm making is that when people can't find places to park, especially during that opening period, they're going to park wherever they can put a car. That could potentially be on Hancock Street, it could potentially be in your backyard. I mean, the thing is, that this is something that cannot wait till the last minute. Because they're already anticipating a larger-than-normal flow of traffic, of people, however they get there, whether it's T, drive, or whatever, if they're driving in and they can't fit it into those parking spaces, temporary spaces that'll be across from the casino, they're going to go north until they can find a place to park their car, because they don't have, there's no place in the city where they're going to have a problem getting to the casino on their own, once they ditch their car. We have three, four different bus routes that go down that area. That's not going to be a problem. The problem is where they leave their car. So this is the same issue we had years ago with people leaving their car here and taking the bus to go into Boston, times a ridiculous percentage, you know? And that's all we're concerned with, that we're mainly concerned with.
I just want to make a point that we do have our vendors in place, so it wouldn't be a long process once we hit the go button. It won't be that difficult to make it happen, because our vendors are already in place, we've been using them for the past 17 years, you know, as far as the resident stickers go. So we can get it done once we have all the, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed. It's possible to get it done.
Okay. And that's great to hear. It's just that the casino is opening in less than five months. So this is not something that we, it's going to take time to get it set up, to get it approved, to get it in place, and if that takes four months, we're getting it in just under the wire. If it takes five months, we're still trying to organize it when we have this deluge of people coming into the city. And that's what I'm mainly concerned.
Oh, understandable. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, I don't see that happening. But once we submit the plan, we want to make sure that we try to touch every base as much as possible as we can, so that, you know, a month later, we're not having to revisit...
Jack pedal, right.
This is such a small city, as you said. Yeah, I think it was great identifying Ward 1 and Ward 6, because they're right on the border, they actually, the casino's right in the middle of that, but this is going to expand. It's not going to be limited to those two.
No, we need to look at it globally, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through to our guests. Thank you very much for being here. I'm glad to hear that my concerns were, wanted to make sure that when we were doing this, we didn't forget about the businesses in the area, and every single one of you touched on it. So I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad that correspondence has been happening, and I do agree, these two areas down Lower Broadway will be hit the most, but resident parking 24 hours has been a topic that we've talked about for a while, something the city's been looking at, trying to get to, because every day I see people hopping, parking their car, hopping on the bus. It happens, we're very attractive, we're right near Boston, so it's a nice alternative to trying to worry about a parking lot we have to pay. So I know that we're focusing in on this, and we need to, because at least in the short run, it's going to be a huge issue. But eventually, it's that whole spillover that we have to look at. So, Mr. O'Donnell, you mentioned that probably within a couple of weeks, you think? Is that enough time? Or are we talking like a month?
I would probably say maybe a month.
It's a simple concept, but implementation's not going to be so simple, as you mentioned.
No, we need lead time for the implementation.
Right. I think once we get that final plan from the whole state transportation that we're meeting on, we can see where they drop offs and things like that, but I think we need a good month, and then after that, it won't take us long. I think the best thing would be, you know, it's going to be the DBW workers, I mean, you know, putting the poles in the ground, and hopefully the weather stays like this, that there's no, you know, frost, so they can get in. But, I mean, it won't take them long to put the signs, most of the signs are already down those streets, the streets we've been in, to make it look good. But, I mean, there's a lot of parking down that Lower Broadway area. There's 30 something hundred in the casino itself.
Yeah, they do have a lot.
There's a lot, and then across the street, you got those, you know, they just started paving, the lots across the street putting the lights in. I mean, there's a lot of parking down there, and then just with, you know, a lot of people coming by trains, boats, and buses, and, you know, the drop offs and everything like that, the off-site parking that they're going to have for their employees. I think we'll be ready.
But we also, our factory is, Sergeant Gaff said, ample parking underneath, but, you know, one of my concerns is also, like we said, is are you going to pay $60 to park overnight, or, you know, a couple hundred bucks to park there for a week? Or are you going to park on Hampshire Street and take a bus?
Yeah, yeah, it's a real concern, so. All right, well, good. I'm glad, I'm glad we're talking about it, I'm glad you guys are thinking about it, so.
I just don't see people parking up in Hampshire Street.
That might be too...
Right, with suitcases if they're staying overnight and things, or, you know, the crowd that they get.
Yeah, that's a little too far.
You know, right, but the game was, the game was not going to...
Get a coffee at a bunch of munchkins, maybe, at that corner, but then you'd go down, so. But no, it's a little closer from square down, that's really going to be the area that's going to get, and in the Village. That'll definitely be the area that gets in. You might have them parking in the strip mall, you know, gateway. So all of that's going to be part of the mix. But the only thing I want to do is I want to just kind of reiterate out there that we do have a problem citywide, too, that we don't want to lose sight of. I know this is, you know, four, five months away, so this is where we're really hinging on, but I want to make sure that when we're doing the process, kind of reach out and do that citywide thing, because I do think it's something that's necessary. But I thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Councilor Semenelli.
President, through you for Councilman Semenelli. We have this in Ward 2 up by the Wooden World Hospital, it works pretty well, and maybe we can model that and look at what we do there. It's a good, this is a good idea. We can eventually do the whole city, but maybe we should just concentrate on that five and six right now, or whatever the numbers were, Ward 1. Because it is fast, we need to do it fast for the newspaper ads and all that kind of stuff. Maybe after he gets a report from transportation, maybe Wiser to dwell more on Ward 1 and Ward 6, and then eventually try to do the whole city. Unless we can do the whole city now, we'll be okay, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's hard to find a place to begin on this thing, you know, because we have some problems. We do have some problems, and, you know, we're talking about people that are going to the casino that are going to cause some problems. But I've talked to a few people, not a lot of people, but a few people, and they just want to go to Ward 1. They don't want to go to the casino. And, you know, what are they going to do? They need a special pass to go visit somebody, they have no interest, they don't even gamble. You know, they don't even go to hotels, they have to be away. And they think that the sticker that they have is going to cover them. And I said, "No, that sticker is only for night." They think that's a 24-hour sticker, but it's not. It's only for night. Our agreement is that we can park anywhere we want. You can't, and I can't get it through to them that they can't park anywhere, if this comes through, you know? And, you know, what if, I want to go down to get a tattoo, never happened, but what if I did, you know? Where would I, I have no interest in anything else, I don't know anybody down there, I just want to go down and get something done. Where do I park? The guy's got an orange crate to park in, you know, so where do you park down there? And I want to go visit my grandmother, and she doesn't live anywhere near the casino, but she lives on Dela Street, was it Butler Street? She lives down in that area, you know? She has to have a special thing, but I want yous to consider all of that stuff, you know, when you do this. Don't just consider the casino, because, you know, it's all kinds of different things that are down there, you know, and we don't know where they're going to go, or where they're going to park or anything, but they have to get down there. They're not interested in getting a sticker, because they're not concerned with the thing. I want to go visit my aunt or something or other, and I need a sticker? That's crazy. And if I get towed, how much is it going to cost me? Where are you going to put my car? Do I get a ticket to pay? Do I have to pay a towing charge? You know, and that's, that could be $140, $150, whatever, you know what it comes out to, you know? So, and people shouldn't have to go through that, there should be something. So whatever discussion you guys are going to have, please take all of this into consideration. Okay?
Definitely will.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely, we are. That's why, I mean, but straightly, we're not really even focusing on the casino, we're focusing on the neighborhoods and the businesses, you know, from our end. And I know Sergeant Gaff, we get together to put, compile all the information that he receives from the state and the transportation experts and everything, we're going to, you know, meld the documents together and then come up with a comprehensive plan.
Well, there's still two businesses down there, you know, a house, I think, a house and a business, and I know what's going to happen, and then they're going to get swamped with cars parked in front of their places, you know? Especially at night, and having good luck, they're not coming out in the morning, you know? How the people get out of their garages and whatever, but, you know, it's going to be a big problem. So just think of those things for me, okay?
Absolutely.
Off of the people of Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Yeah, I totally agree with Councilor Hanlon, but this isn't about the casino site, it's about our residents, it's about the people that live in our city and work in our city and pay taxes in our city. We need to protect them and not on this one worry about the casino folks, right? Because they're dealing with their own parking, and as Sergeant Gaff said, they have plenty of parking, but really, they don't, because again, Monday night, they just came and got approval for another 647 spots, I think it's 647. They're looking to even build more parking somewhere in the city if they can find additional lots. So they are very concerned about parking. They've rented out hundreds of spots in Sullivan Station, Wellington Station, Malton Station, and they're continuously always looking for additional parking. So they don't even have enough parking to handle what they think they're going to have to handle come June, in July, and August of the summer.
And additionally, what we're going to have to focus on going forward, as you well know, both of those parking places are temporary structures, if you will, so we have to think long-term, because...
It's 36 months from now, it's going to go by quickly, you're right, Mr. O'Donnell.
Exactly. And, you know, at that point, I'm sure whatever they develop will have some parking, but it won't have the amount that they currently have under these three-year leases.
Absolutely, and, you know, that's long-term, long-term focus. I'm just wondering if we should even try to really rush this up and try to maybe roll out some sort of idea or concept now to start to try to figure out, to work out the kinks, so that our residents know what is going on and how it's going to work, so that when people do start to flood our city, the residents who live in our city are already aware and have already gone through their training period or their, you know, craft course on all of this, so that we can start to get this, people that are coming into the city are the ones we're going to have to teach the rules and the regulations, so now we're not trying to teach our residents on top of teaching patrons that are coming into our city of the new rules and regulations. So I'm really kind of urgently asking that this happens quicker than that study is done by the statewide Traffic Commission that is being conducted by individuals all over the state, that we think about in-house ourselves, about trying to roll something out, even if it's in the next month or something, and it's not really enforceable, but it just starts to get people to understand the changes that are happening, and we need to start to go through a different method of process.
Yeah, we're confident our Communications Department will be able to get a thorough message out for people to understand, and if we feel the need, we could, you know, consider public forums, public meetings, or however we think we can just touch every facet of the city.
And I agree with Stoltone, right, but that, and again, not turning, we are on the same page, but it takes, it takes time. It takes time to get people to a community meeting, it takes time to, you know, get everybody on the same page, and that's, you know, again, we're four and a half months away from this opening. It's going to come by in the blink of an eye, and we're not going to be prepared if going to come by in the blink of an eye, and we're not going to be prepared if we don't start doing it today, tomorrow, in the coming weeks, and I think Sergeant Gaff wants to add some more, and I'm going to hear from him if he knows.
No, I just think, you know, to start a temporary one right now in the middle of the winter, and, you know, if we can set a goal, I mean, I would try to roll it in with the beginning of street sweeping, you know, when it just, you know, start the program right there, April first, and that would give you some time, and then we'll get, you know, start it right in the middle of the winter, and then all of a sudden we hit them with street sweeping, that could change, and, you know, I think we have to take that into consideration, too, and, you know, it would be, that would be something I, you know, we could try to roll into together, I think, that.
Yes.
I'd actually be a little bit concerned by that, only because Sergeant Gaff is, and you can imagine, Sergeant Gaff, you're out there, you tow hundreds of cars at the beginning of street sweeping every year.
Two hundred and sixty-five last storm.
No, but I'm saying, the beginning of the street, street sweeping, in April first, we're towing tons of cars.
No, we usually, historically, the mayor gives a grace period, and we give them warnings, the ticket printers, they give warnings, they say that, you know, you're in violation, and if you continue to do this.
Which is fine, so we're trying to teach them at that point, in April first, the regulations and the rules of street sweeping going forward for the remainder of the coming spring and summer, and now we're going to, on top of it, try to compromise, then bring this on at the same time, so now you're trying to teach them two methods, trying to teach them the street sweeping is going to happen in your neighborhood, such and such date, such and such time of the year, and now you're going to say, and on top of that, you have to be mindful of this twenty-four hour, just a whole lot happening in April first, I think if we could start to look at it sooner and soft-roll it out, then it might not be such a bad idea, but it's something that hopefully we'll continue to have discussions on, because I think it needs to happen.
I'm sure there's going to be several discussions on the topic going forward.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty already going, and I know the chief has been talking to Lieutenant Strong, and Lieutenant Hanlon was involved before he went back to the shift, and I took over his spot, so there, they have been a lot of discussions amongst the command staff for the chief, I know that, because I spoke to him today, so.
So then I would ask you, any of you, you guys, this is committee of the whole, where do you suggest we go with this piece, because we need to keep the conversations alive, and I don't know that we need to continuously have, and maybe we do, but committee of the whole, every, every so often have talked about this, I don't know if we should send this to a subcommittee, that we can work on this in public safety, or, I'm not sure where to go with this budget.
Would you go to Traffic Council? Do I second, like, a woman speaker? Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank you for appearing this evening, you know, there's going to be a lot of people here, we know, from all over the world, the country for sure, and I don't want them to think we're hillbillies or rednecks here in the humble city of Everett, but this is a good, a good conversation to have, I mean, besides Counsel Kupon, I think I live the closest to the casino, and the parkway is a big issue, too, it's a straight line right down to the casino, and walk on that sidewalk, you'll be walking from Chelsea probably all the way down, but there was a discussion that I've heard, and probably everybody here's heard, that they were interested in the Costco property, the Home Depot property, which I do like both stores, but that would probably solve a lot of the parking issues if the casino was to buy that, and I know that's been talked about, do you know anything about that?
I mean, it's been rumors being around back and forth, but I don't know how big their appetite is for that, it'd be hard to say.
Oh, because that, that is a big parking lot right now, but I've heard that over the last, since the casino's inception, so that's something that the Encore people have to, if this does get to the point where we need relief, we as a city council have to do something, there's cars all over the place in Somerville and Charlestown, for instance, they're going to be packing in Little Italy, the north end, to come to walk to this casino, so, like you say, it's not just the city of Everett, but, you know, we try to address issues before they become a major problem, and we brought up the fact of panhandling. Now, I've been Atlantic City only once, and, you know, this is why we try to have these discussions, and is the Everett Police going to be the sole, you know, the main authority for this whole area, I know you are for Everett, but for the casino site, you have other?
So, right now, it's a duel, the state law is that the state police, with conjunction with the Everett Police, will have a co-force down there, so.
State police.
State police, they have gaming rights, so just like down Suffolk Downs, Springfield, they're, they're there because of the gaming part, we do, we will have, I believe it's Lieutenant Strong will be there, and five patrolmen down there assigned with the task force, the state police, they will be down there, that's their job, so we're going to have a task force down there with the state police to take care of the gaming, some more jurisdictions are being worked out, we're guiding, you know, once they pass the gaming floor to the hotel, but Everett Police will be the sole provider from there out, and probably inside, too, they were still working on, so we'll have hotel, we'll have the restaurants, we'll have the waterway, the boat, we have the boat, so we'll have the waterway, we'll have all that area from any city of Everett property, we will be the jurisdiction to handle that.
I like the water feature to the whole, does anybody know that travels over that bridge, they're, I'm glad that they designed boats that will go underneath the bridge without lifting it.
Correct.
But there's three yacht clubs right across the way, and even if one small boat goes by, that bridge lifts, so I don't know what they're going to do in that regard, and that will really back up things, but.
Well, that could be something that could be discussed, and I'll see if it's being discussed in transportation, just like you do in Florida with all those waterways down there, there's only certain times you can lift the bridge, obviously, I think they're probably straightened on straight now, so that's something that could be brought up with.
Could you find that out for me, I'm very curious about that, Counselor McKinnon, I know has been, he's not here this evening, but he's been Director Funk, is that, was his name, the gentleman you mentioned?
Yes.
He's attended some of these meetings, and he's actually filled me in on a lot of stuff, but, you know, I agree with Counselor Hanlon, you know, when you're visiting somebody, if you've got a friend that lives on one side of Everett and you come over, and there's no parking, and that's, that's an issue that everybody here has thought about, but I don't know how you really address that, maybe through a mailing, you know, if you need, you know, in my case, my neighborhood, there's a lot of senior citizens that have nurses and caregivers coming in and so forth, and you want to make sure that those people are able to visit the, you know, the people they're supposed to visit, and, you know, as it stands now, the, we have a five-day, the weekends, you know, people have company, you know, and it's just the way it is, and it's a good thing to have company, you know, but, you know, I want to protect those people, too, but I, you know, this is a good first step, I know, not a first step, but you, the mayor's office, I know, has been involved, Miss Gregory and Sergeant Gaff, but, you know, if it becomes a major problem, we as city council should insist, and they're doing real well there, you know, this is the thing, if the Encore Resort is really doing well, that they should, and I'm sure that they will, if they need extra parking, because it has been discussed, you know, the, and the linkage from that walkway, they call, what is it, the?
River Walk.
The River Walk, right, that's going to go right into the casino area from back of Costco's, I saw the new sidewalks being placed, so it'd be perfect for somebody to actually park there, and they will be parking, I can imagine what they're going to do, that, you know, they're going to have to have some protection, these stores, because you know that people are going to park in that Costco area, but I think Counselor McGlaughlin brings up some great points, and I'm glad he actually places on the agenda, and anything I can do, I just want to be informed as to what the future, you know, on this piece is, and I want to thank you all for being here this evening, thank you.
Counselor, Counselor McGlaughlin, before I ask you what you want to do with this piece, what is, answer this question, how many parking spots are across from the casino right now, ballpark figure?
I don't have an exact number, but I could find that out.
My concern is, a year from now, where it's going to be, they're going to develop something there, so all those parking spots are gone, so let's say it holds thirty thousand cars, that's, unless you have a, unless there's a plan with this, that's my concern also.
Well, that's part of the ongoing discussions, as I just mentioned, in my interaction with Counselor McGlaughlin, whatever they do develop down there is going to require X amount of parking spots, but it's guaranteed that it's going to be less than what will be existing for the next three years going forward, so, you know, that's, that's part of the thought process, and same as, as well as the new development down towards the parkland, that's temporary for three years, whatever they do there is going to require parking, but it's, we know that it's going to be X amount less than what we're currently standing there, so we have to think beyond that, we have to think beyond the next three years.
Counselor Paul Tino?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, I want to thank you for coming up here and giving us some details, I think it's important that this is going to, this is going to be here before, in a blink, this is going to be here before we know it.
Who are we going with this, we have any more questions for our guest?
Done, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that this committee recommend to the great, to the whole, to refer this to the administration for a detailed breakdown in thirty days, because, again, whatever is going to have to be initiated, it's going to, it's going to, they're going to require the next thirty days to plan it out, if they want to implement it, that brings us to the beginning of February, Sergeant Gaff's recommend, you know, idea of, of the, you know, whatever they come up in thirty days, it's going to take another thirty days to implement, that brings us up back into the street sweeping period, and, again, this is not going to be about the people who are staying at the hotel, these are about the people who are coming in for the novelty of playing the slots, who don't care where they park, and they're going to grab wherever they can go, and until that novelty factor, you know, tones down, Counselor Matusky gets a good point, I didn't even think about the Gateway Mall, how much, how much that's going to impact, you know, we're constantly thinking about the smaller businesses, but this is going to impact everything in the city, we're too small a city to be able, for this not to impact us like this, so I would recommend that the council, Monday night, refer this to the mayor's office for a detailed breakdown in thirty days, and then at that point, then we can continue the discussion as to what that plan is and how it will be implemented, and what the impacts will be.
Okay, before that recommendation, Counselor Hanlon?
I want to second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay.
And also, and also, just as a point of information, I believe that the parking at the Wyndham is three thousand eighty automobiles, and the parking across the street is eight hundred and twenty or thirty, something like that, that's the parking that they have.
Thank you. We had a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Could we read number one on the agenda?
Item number one, this is a resolution offered by Councilors Kupon and McGlaughlin to a representative of the Assessors Office appear to discuss and explain the assessment process in the steps implemented to assert any property values.
Counselor Kupon.
Thank you, Mr. President, if we could please have the guests before us this evening, maybe Mr. Demas may want to come forward as well.
Just state your name and your position, please.
B.J. Deveraux, Assessors Office.
Eric Demas, CFO.
Counselor Kupon.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for being here, as you know, the tax bills go out, and everyone's eyes go up, and they go, okay, what's going on, so, no one's a big fan of taxes, but taxes are necessary to some extent to operate a city, so I thought the, the best thing we could do is have you before us and explain the process of how we go about assessing property, setting a tax rate, all of that, so that the folks at home could kind of get a sense of the process and where we're at, and if you could, along the way, I'll, I'll jump in with questions afterwards, but if you could address how frequently we appraise properties, if we're using different vendors at different times, or do we go with consistency, why in one year there might be a big spike in value of appraisals, et cetera, and then we'll move on from there, I'd greatly appreciate if you do that.
No problem, the values are established using sales from the marketplace, and when I say sales, that we use, aren't, what are described as arms-length sales, sales that are valid, we don't, for instance, a lot of questions that have come into my office over the last month have been, are we using sales from the lower Broadway area that have been purchased by LLCs associated with Encore, those sales are coded out as non-arms-length, because they had no open market exposure, the sales we use, when we get the data from the registry, if it's not a valid sale, if we can't verify it, it gets coded out, so those sales are not used to develop the assessments, the, the values, when you, when you said what, what can potentially cause a spike in the values, we have to have a large enough sample size in order to adjust the values, and a lot of times in certain classes of properties, obviously not residential, because there's many residential sales every year, but commercial industrial sales, those tend to come through less frequently, so when we have a large enough sample size, that's when the adjustment takes place, these are all predicated by the Department of Revenue, all our values are approved by the Department of Revenue, they, they get adjusted every year, but every, now it's every five years, it's, we have what's called a recertification year, that's starting to take place now, because FY twenty will be a recertification year for us by the DOR, and, you know, so everything's, everything's sale, is sale-based, we're, we're market-based, we're, we're out in the market, we're looking at sales, and that's what we're using to drive our assessments, Massachusetts and Massachusetts, the assessments are, the goal is to be at a hundred percent of fair market value, the DOR gives you some leeway, depending on the type of property it is, obviously, you know, the more difficult, commercial industrial property is more difficult to, to assess than, say, a single-family home or a two-family home.
Okay, so, Mr. Deveraux, thank you very much for that, so do, do we do, when you take the sample size, you take the, the sales, comparable sales along different properties, are we doing that internally in-house, are we employing appraisers, what do we do with that?
We have had Patriot Properties handling that in, in the city, we, as I say, our office does a lot of the coding of the sales, but Patriot Properties takes the data, and they're the ones who develop the, the tables that these adjustments are based on, they've been doing the assessments here in the city since 2012.
Okay.
We don't, we haven't bounced around vendors or anything like that.
And, and there's probably, I mean, it's, on the one hand, it's good to, to, you know, use different people to get different perspectives, but at the same time, I can see the value with having a group that's kind of semi-invested in the community, has been around for a while, has seen some of the changes, and can have a better handle on, on what you've got going on.
And the advantage is they also handle several surrounding communities, so that, a, a commercial property buyer, for instance, they're not, they might not just be looking in Everett, they're looking in other surrounding communities, so it's, it is helpful from that sense also.
And, and how frequently are those, are those numbers being re, is it every year?
What, yeah, we adjust the values on a yearly basis, the assessed, the assessed values.
And then the, the five-year certification, could you explain that a little bit more?
It's, it's, the, the DOR just goes a lot more in-depth on our values and everything we're doing in our office to, to be sure we're adhering to DOR guidelines and Mass law, almost everything we do in our office is dictated by Massachusetts law.
Okay, and I don't know if you can speak to this, but if you could, I'd appreciate it, so, once we have our, our appraisals of different properties, we know what the values are of the different classes, how do you calculate a tax rate, do we kind of back into what we think we need to spend as a community to cover expenses, and then kind of take a look at what our, I guess, our inventory is, and then try to figure out a fair tax rate from there, is that, is that how all that happens, or?
Well, from our offices, we're not, we get, when we get the, by the time it comes to us to work on the tax rate, the levy's already been established, so, and our values have already been established, so it's, it's, we're, you know, yeah.
If I could jump in a little bit, just to give a, a more global picture, as far as the tax rate is concerned, so, when, when you take a look at the tax rate, the starting point is the budget process, okay, so the driving factor is going to be our annual appropriations, at that point, at the same time, we, we're continually updating our financial forecasting, but at the same time, we put together the, the appropriations that get approved by city council, we're also looking at all of our other financial indicators, one of the other biggest factors is going to be our revenue estimates.
Right.
Once you get those two, it makes a determination as to the net amount that you have to raise through taxation.
Okay.
It's a process that the Department of Revenue is involved throughout the entire process, actually, they're involved with us the entire way, at that point, once you have that, all of your valuations through Patriot Properties, all of the market data is being assembled late spring over the summertime, so then when you actually go to move forward and get it certified by the Department of Revenue, what happens is in the first step Revenue, what happens is, in the first step of the tax rate-setting process, is you need to get your valuation certified by the Department of Revenue. So once we actually have all of that market data and the values for all properties citywide have been adjusted, those get submitted to the Department of Revenue. They will go through and they will certify those values. So they take a look at it, they look to see if there are any anomalies, if anything's jumping out. Sometimes they have questions, sometimes they don't. We've been very involved with the Department of Revenue for the past couple of years during this process, for two reasons. One, there was a lot of turnover at the Department of Revenue, a lot of retirements, so we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining consistent relationships, because the valuations in Everett have been so unique. They've been more out of the norm than what historically Everett has seen, given the fact that you have such a large development coming through with, with the resort. And more and more people have been driven to the city of Everett, more and more people have been interested in owning and obtaining city property. In addition to that, one of the things that we've been talking about is, for the first three years, or the past three years, the majority of our increases have been with residential. We didn't see a lot of commercial-industrial. And when Mr. Deveraux is explaining that we have to have enough qualified sales, in the prior three years, we haven't had enough qualified sales on the commercial-industrial side, because we didn't see a lot of activity. So those values remained relatively stagnant over the past three years. So, it's the pendulum effect that we talked about, where, you know, if you have two pots of money, you have residential, commercial-industrial. The residential size, the residential side was growing at a much faster rate. We were seeing for the prior three years that your residential properties were double-digits, year after year after year, and some of your larger residential properties, you know, when, once you got to the three, four families and above, we were seeing in, in a couple of years, they were averaging 20% increases in valuations, whereas commercial-industrial was stagnant. Because again, there wasn't enough qualified sales. In the prior year, what we were seeing is, as we got closer to the casino, as we were forecasting, and all of our experts that were advising us from a freight, from a valuation standpoint, were saying, the closer you get, you're gonna start pe, commercial-industrial. Businesses are not gonna wanna make that investment if they don't have the market for it, and when the resort wasn't operational, you don't have the market for it. As you get closer to the opening, you know that the market's coming quicker, so that's why we were talking about during the tax rate-setting process, that we're now seeing, you know, an acre, commercial-industrial, an acre of land going at $2 million. So once we have all of, once we have all of that information and the valuation certified by the Department of Revenue, at that point, and actually in conjunction while we're getting those amounts certified, we're also submitting all of the council votes, we're submitting all the supporting documentation to the Department of Revenue, they're making sure that the amounts that we're reporting for appropriations were appropriately voted. If there were any votes that had taken place as far as funding sources, either through stabilization, free cash, they're verifying that information. They're making sure that everything we were required to do by statute, we've done. Then at that point, once all the information has been submitted, we're required by statute to have a public hearing on, on the tax rate-setting process, and that's the tax rate hearing process. At that point, the City Council takes, actually, two votes. They're not voting on what the rate actually is, but what you're actually voting on is what the residential exemption is gonna be, and then what you're gonna do with the shift up to an allowable maximum of 1.75, which we've been doing. Once City Council takes tho, takes those two votes, we then provide that information to the Department of Revenue, and then the, our tax rate is then finalized.
Okay. So in a typical fiscal year, how many times is the Department of Revenue actually involved in the process? Is it like four, three?
For the tax rate-setting process?
Yes.
Actually, for the, you would say that it'd be one or two times, traditionally speaking, but I can tell you, during the tax rate-setting process, you submit that information, they then have questions, and it's a constant back and forth.
Okay.
I can tell you that, you know, without placing, you know, any criticism on the Department of Revenue, they also have a lot of new people, given the fact that a couple of years ago, they had a number of individuals statewide within the Department of Revenue retire. So they had this void, there was a lot of new people. So, there's a lot of questions, there's certainly, you know, a little bit of a learning process from the individuals that are working to collect the votes and enter the information in, and make sure things are being handled appropriately. Because during the tax rate-setting process, the Department of Revenue is also working to review the city's balance sheets for all cities and towns. They're working to review free cash. They're working, they, they have a number of things going on. The, the municipal division is so focused on free cash, balance sheets, and tax rate-setting process, it would be like a CPA firm at tax, tax time.
Is that like the whole tax rate recapitulation, or whatever it's called?
It's called, we, we refer to it as a tax recap, but it's a tax recapitulation worksheet, yes.
Okay, and there's a ton of information on there, and, yeah, they're like pouring through all of that, just to make sure everything lines up.
They're looking at our grants, they're looking at our enterprise funds, they are looking at every piece of financial data that is required to be adhered to from a matched general law standpoint. So, it's, it's, it's the state's checks and balances to make sure that a community isn't getting in trouble. They, they don't like to see community, they like to be able to help the communities that are running down the wrong path early, before they reach a point to, you know, some of the communities that have been taken over by states through receivership.
Receivership, yeah. Okay, thank you. One, one last question to Mr. Deveraux, is, as far as like a sample size, I'm glad that we got the word out there to folks, that if you do have transactions that aren't arms-length, that if they're fluke sales, for whatever reason, that's not gonna throw the whole valuation process off. What would, I guess every class of property is gonna be a little bit different, but what would you see as, I guess, an average sample size? How many parcels are you looking at for single-residents or multi-residentials versus commercials?
On, on a commercial, it's typically 2%, so if there's 300 parcels, they, they wanna see, you know, a, a minimum, a minimum of a half a dozen sales, but typically, they'll let you go wa, go beyond the one year. They'll let you go back another six months and forward another six months, even into the new, the current calendar year to do that. Obviously, if, if the class is, is bigger, like a, in this community, a two or three family, they, something more in the 5% range, they wanna see.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you to my colleagues.
Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. First of all, I think Mr. Demas answered some, most of the questions I was, I was gonna ask you, Mr. Deveraux. But I just wanna clarify, and I believe it was answered, the process you explained to us, that wasn't purely residential, that applies both residential and commercial-industrial?
Correct.
All right, that was really the only other thing that I, he did an explanation. I just wanted to make sure and clarify that that was my understanding. Thank you. And, and thank you for all your information, very detailed.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once the process of, of doing the valuation of all the properties is returned from the state, and we now know what it's gonna be, could you explain to me the proposition now, or the, the process of going through the 2.5% limit?
Sure. Well, if I could just step back. First off, it's, it's not the state giving us the values, it's the state certifying the values that, that we had received from, from the companies. But, one of the things that you take a look at, it's not prior to the, any of that process, prior to the valuation pro, well, the valuation process is factored in too. But Prop 2.5 says that you're allowed to raise taxes, 2.5% above the prior year, plus new growth. So as part, as, so we're forecasting what that 2.5% is, is gonna be through our valuations, but at the same time, we're also forecasting our growth, which we have always forecasted conservatively. So, when we're putting together a budget, we're already calculating what we think those numbers are gonna be, but when we send our values into the state, that's when the state is certifying what you're actually allowed to raise from a two, Prop 2.5 standpoint.
Yes, it-
So it's all about them certifying those, those values.
I, I was, I thought the base was the last year's budget. That, that's where we go, from there, to, you come up with the 2.5% of that amount. So if we were like at $130 million last year, we could raise, what, 3 million more? So our budget could be $133 million for next year.
It's based off the prior year levy. The only piece that you're missing, as far as that's concerned, is if we know we have a large revenue stream coming in, that gets factored in as well, because everything is based on the tax levy, not the actual appropriations.
And one other thing too, is that, we talked about the, the Wynn property, the Wynn, Wynn Development property. We can't place a value on that property, is that correct?
The value of that property is going to be something to be discussed between the state and Encore. And the reason being is, is because we have a Section 121A agreement, a community host agreement under MGL 121, which dictates specific amounts that they need to pay to the city in lieu of taxes.
Okay, but it's not really an assessment of that property? I mean, we, we know what it's gonna be, but that's not what go, actually goes into the record?
You, you, correct. You're not gonna see, you know, the latest construction estimates have been at 2.6 billion. You're, you're not gonna see that on our, on our books. We're not in the process of working through that with them, no.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Counselor Siminelli.
For Counselman Siminelli. Therefore, how do we explain that the tax rate went up 11% in a more simpler form than what you just did?
Not necessarily. And, and one of the things that I, I kept trying to correct, when people were saying that the tax rate was gonna go up 11%, the tax levy is gonna, was, was going up 11%. And the reason why I say that is because we are in such unusual times, whereas commercial-industrial may be growing, this year ended up growing faster than residential, and in prior years, the residential market side was growing much faster than the commercial-industrial. So, there's never gonna be a consistent percentage increase or decrease across everybody's values, or, or everybody's taxes. And the reason being is, like I said, another example, even if you take commercial-industrial out of it, for the past three years, multifamily properties have increased substantially faster than single-family properties. So it, it's not, the rates are going up 11%. It's the levy, the amount that we actually have to raise is going up 11%. But predominantly, one, to try to answer it as simple as you can, the appropriations, the amount that we voted, either through schools, public safety, what have you, the more you have to raise, the greater your percentage, your increase is gonna have to be.
Mr. President, I'm asking them, therefore, what is the percentage rate increase? If it's not 11?
The levy went up approximately 11%. Not every single property, you can determine how much their rate was changed, because it's based upon their valuation. So i, i, if you have a single-family home, that the valuation increased 5% this year, and you have a commercial-industrial property, that their valuation increased by 40%, their rate is gonna be, their rate, the amount that they're gonna generate in taxes is gonna be different. It's not uniform, i, is my point. You gotta look at it as the levy, because overall, citywide, that's what you're looking at. That's why you'll have some properties that their taxes went up a certain percentage this year, but other people went up a certain percent. It depends on where you are, you know, certain neighborhoods appreciate, have been appreciating faster. And again, this year, we finally saw the commercial-industrial side really take off at $2 million an acre.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Metuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our, our tax bills are based on the city budget?
Yes.
So if the budget goes down, taxes go down too, right? Does that make sense?
It does.
Now-
Or if our revenue, if our budget stays the same, if your appropriations stay the same, and revenues go up, your taxes would go down.
Okay, that-
It's both pieces that you have to look at. That's why we're saying, once that, the resort becomes operational, we now have a much larger revenue stream coming in.
Okay, and the big development on the Parkway, the 500, 600 units, that's gonna be a pretty big tax bill. You wouldn't know what that is offhand, would you?
I do not.
The property is being currently constructed, the Pioneer, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Well, that's 280 units.
Oh, it's 280.
And, right now, I walked through that property in early January, and a good deal of it is still in sheet rock. So, our assessment for FY '20 on that property is, is going to only be as partially completed. It's full value won't be, and then they have to get leased up, what we refer to as stabilized. And only at that point will its full value, full market value be recognized, so that could, that could still be 12 to 24 months away.
And that value will actually be based upon other comparable properties at that time, so there's no way for us to estimate, you know, how much that would be. It certainly is going to be significant, but there's no way for us to estimate that right now.
Well, I don't think there's anything you can compare that with right now, in Everett. Maybe I'm wrong, but, I mean, you would expect them to pay somewhere in the $20 million range in taxes. I, I'm just guessing on that, but-
I, I, I don't think it would be anywhere near, near that.
Not near that.
Twenty million, no, because if the, if the, that, that property gets taxed at the residential rate, a lot of people think the big apartment buildings are taxed at the commercial rate, they are not, they're taxed at the residential.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
So-
But there is a commercial aspect to it, too?
Very small.
Very small.
Very small.
But that's considered residential, most of it?
That is, that is taxed at the residential rate, so-
Okay, well, that explains, even so, that'd be a lot of taxes, too.
Yes, it, 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 it will be, but as I say, not only do they have to complete the project, which I think is still-
They have a waste of-
Sometime, sometime late summer, maybe? And, then it has to, it has to be leased up. They have to get the property, what we, again, what we call stabilize, get it to somewhere between 5% and 10% vacancy. At that point, whether the developer-
Well, there is, there is another example, the old Charleston Chu property.
Exactly.
So what, you know, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but roughly, what would they pay?
As, as Mr. Demas said, it's hard to project two years out, because we don't know what cap rates will be, what institutional investors will be.
Well, I was referring to now.
But, but, but currently in the market, we're see, we see, that's considered a Class A building, that would, we're, we're seeing them sell anywhere from the high 300,000s to almost, almost 400,000 per unit, based on sales in other communities.
Per unit, so the total package, you would know that figure?
Well, I, I could, I could work it out.
No, I was just curious.
I mean, I would, you know, nine, you know, seven, eight, nine million, depending on what, what's happening at the time.
Okay, and this one's a little bigger. So I was a little, I was way off, but- I, I was half-right? Oh, that's-
Still a very large number.
All right, and the other question is, and I know, you know, the Boston Edison issue was just published in the paper, and that is the waterfront area. And whether the Encore people buy it, or another, another entity buys that and puts a hotel there, and get demolishes those chimneys and the whole nine yards, and develops that, that's a whole nother beautiful thing happening in this city. My point is that, all these nice things that are happening, these first-class things, you know, the regular guy, you know, working and paying his taxes, they expect, even the business people here, to see a decrease in taxes at some point. You know, that, that goes without saying, I mean, and you can't say, well, you know, we did have the school department up here, we grabbed nine, when we got that 20 million. I shouldn't say the word "grabbed." I know we're overburdened with the population, but, you know, we have the best school, I mean, there's a lot been done in this community. The parks are all completed, the schools are all brand-new. At some point, people would like to see a tax bill, and I've discussed this with the mayor, and, and, and just yesterday, actually, and he understands my concern, you know, but I, I realize the property values are through the roof. And I saw it happen in some of all, a three-family Shaq, shouldn't say shack either, a three-family house that is going for a million without any improvements on it. You know, and that's coming this way, too, I can see that, but, you know, the big picture here is that, you know, all this development is supposed to better the homeowners, you know, we do a lot for the schools, we do a lot with the police, do a lot for every, you know, we, we gotta be fair here, and the taxpayers, you know, and we have a lot of senior citizens here, and, and, you know, you gotta look at that picture, too. You know, it's nice that your property's worth X amount of money, but who wants to move out of this beautiful city, you know? move out of this beautiful city, you know? But, you know, I'm just saying, you know, that's the, I think that's the point that we're trying to make. We want to see taxes, there was a bunch of businessmen here, I talked to Mr. Deveraux earlier, he knew about that, you know, two meetings ago, we are the ones that really, you know, I was talking to a businessman yesterday, and he's paying 2,000 a week. He's been in business a long time, you know, and I said, whoa, another gentleman was here, his building went up 20,000, you know, in one year. It's nice to know that your property's worth a lot, but, you know, then you've got to increase the price of whatever business you're in to sustain these things. You know, so it's a vicious cycle, but it would be nice, at some point, to say, oh, as you, well, you weren't here, but years ago, it was, we had the lowest taxes in the state. It was common, people loved it, you know? Of course, we had a lot of industry then. But this is why we bring up the rock saw pile, you know, which I didn't vote for, by the way, and, you know, that waterfront, I knew this was going to happen. You know, that guy who bought that on speculative, he put his business there, but I knew that waterfront here, everybody knew, well, I knew it, and you're going to see the scrap metal place go, too. Schnitzer, you know, New England Polerize, all that stuff's waterfront. It's across the street from Bunker Hill Monument. Look what's happening in Charles Town. Couldn't give that property away 20 years ago. And it's a very nice area, too. But I want to thank you, gentlemen, and Mr. Deveraux, on a personal note, I want to, there was a widow that just called me the other day that she needed assistance, Mr. President. Her husband died, and Mr. Deveraux personally went to her house to explain the tax exemption for elderly and for a widowed service person and so forth, and there's a blind person in the house. So, you know, he's the kind of guy that takes a phone call and does the work, and for that, I say thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Counselor McGlaughlin.
And if I could just comment on one of the things that you had said, and you're absolutely correct. It's amazing how time flies, because I was going to say, when I got here and I started thinking about the time, it's been over three years now. I think one of the things that I first told, or shared with the city council, the first time that I presented a budget, within the first three months of me being here and I started looking at some financial forecasting, I don't know how your memories are, but I think one of the things I said was, 2019 was going to be the most challenging year for the city. I could see the writing on the wall. And after that happened, you know, since I've said that, actually, there's been a number of other challenges that we had to face that I wasn't even aware of back then when I said that. So I always said that 2019 was going to be a challenging year. What I can tell you, though, is you're exactly correct. There are so many tremendous opportunities, a lot of things that we're seeing that are happening in this city, and people making more and more inquiries trying to come into this city, industry, businesses, as we continue to work on the transportation plan, and making it more advantageous for these businesses to come. As these larger organizations come, these high-powered companies come, the more hotels, it's going to be more companies to help disperse the tax burden. So we absolutely see a very positive future for this city, nothing indicating to us that it's going to slow down in any way. So we're going to start seeing that next year. This is our difficult year. Like I said, I saw it within three months of coming here, and just dissecting the information, I said this will be a challenging year. It's only going to keep getting challenger until fiscal '20 comes. And fortunately for us, fiscal '20 is, we're right on the doorstep. So I do see a very bright financial future for this city, and we'll be able to start realizing the expectations that I think everybody had when this process originally kicked off.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you, through our invited guests, well, thank you for the presentation today, it was very informative. Mr. Demas, one of the questions that I had asked back when this all began, one of the biggest challenges we would face in the city of Everdine's success, come success, comes a lot of changes, comes a lot of, a lot of new growth into our community, comes a lot, we are outsourcing our long-term residents for success, unfortunately, at a pace that is uncomfortable to some of our colleagues, or probably all of them. You can't go anywhere in the city of Everett without being asked a question about taxes at this time of the year. As Counselor Matusky talked about, some of the business owners, I get asked every day of a business owner, their taxes are through the roof. I had a friend of mine compare his building down on Main Street to a building probably 500 yards down the street, on the other side of Main Street, down on Malden Side. He's paying quadruple of what his friend is paying down on the other end of Malden, on Main Street, literally, for the same purpose of business. The guy in Malden has parking, he's two apartments upstairs, maybe even four apartments upstairs, and he is paying a fraction of what this other business owner on Main Street is paying for his building and property is on a footprint, it's, you know. What can we hope for, to see happen going in 2020? As you said, because you did say, when you first got here, 2019 was going to be the most challenging year, leading up to that would be challenging, and then 2019 would be awful, and then we would start to hopefully decline. You know, many of us campaigned in this room for the casino on bring wind to Everett and you'll see lower taxes. We didn't campaign to bring wind to Everett to see taxes go through the roof, and the fact of the matter is, people don't care what their values are, and what their, what their home or their building is assessed at, because they're not planning on moving out of the city. As you said, Everett is moving, or Counselor Matusky said, Everett's moving in the right direction. We have a lot of good success happening in our city. People don't want to move out, they actually want to continue to live here. Long-term families that live here want to stay here. Long-term business owners that are here want to continue to have their business successful and continue to grow. The fact of the matter is, they're being pushed out. What can we look for in 2020 or in longer term? Just in a few brief sentences, you know, could you sum that up to a point where it might be acceptable to business owners and residents that are at home watching this tonight or at home that will watch this in the coming days and weeks?
Certainly, I'll do my best to be as brief as possible. I would say, I would say two things. One of the things, and I'm not an appraiser, so, Mr. Deveraux, if you'd like to add anything, please do, but one of the things that I expect to see is for the valuation increases to stabilize, okay? So I'm not saying that the values are going to go lower, but if anything, they're going to stabilize, so things are going to be more predictable. The one thing that I can say that I wish we would have had more control over, but we really didn't, because it was such a pendulum, is when we had residential rise at such a fast rate for three years, where commercial industrial remained stagnant, and then, all of a sudden, as we got very close, we had residential basically stabilize in their valuation increases, and then, and then the commercial industrial took off. So if you actually take a look, and one of the things that I did an analysis on with Mr. Deveraux, is we took a handful of properties, 20 or so throughout the city, and what we saw is that for the first, the last four years, they basically had no increases, because all of the increase of the tax levy was being picked up by the residents. And the commercial industrial tax, taxes, tax levy piece was staying relatively stagnant. So their, their taxes didn't go up, even though the levy was going up, their taxes didn't go up or remained, or in a lot of cases, they went down on a number of them. And unfortunately, what's happening is, because all of a sudden, that took off so quickly to the opening, they basically took five years of tax increases all in one year. So I get it, I completely understand. The one thing I wish we would have had control over, that we can't because we have to follow Mass General law, is that all properties would have valued at the same rate, so we didn't have this swing effect. Because if you look at the majority of the residents, the residential properties this year, even though our tax levy went up approximately 11 percent, a lot of your taxes, the residential taxes, didn't go up 11 percent. And that's because that commercial industrial base got so, got so much larger in one year. I wish that it would have been more uniform over the past couple of years, so that the burden was more evenly distributed. What I see with the casino opening is that that burden is going to stabilize, and that you're going to see, you're going to see those valuation increases start to stabilize. And stability is good.
But with new growth, is it going to continue to affect our values? Because we know that there is another hotel on the brink, there's maybe two more hotels on the brink, there's more condominium developments that are going to happen, there's more growth that is, we're not going to stop growth the day the casino opens, it's just probably going to be the beginning of new growth in our city. So is that going to affect values and assessments?
Desirability is always going to have an impact on your values, but the new growth helps mitigate the increases and more, it creates a bigger pie for the levy to be dispersed. So we welcome the new growth, because let's say you have, let's say you have a, and I'm just using round numbers, $100 million base for commercial industrial, and then all of a sudden, you have two large properties go through, you have two large businesses go through that are going to add $20 million. You are now going to be dispersing the commercial industrial tax levy instead of between $100 million in valuation, between 120 million. So assume that there was no valuation increase in the existing properties, you add that 20 percent increase from all of this new development, it's going to give you a bigger pie to disperse the actual levy. So the new growth is good. It's certainly going to have an impact on the valuations, however, when you have a bigger, when you have a bigger group to kick in and to cover that levy, it's only going to be beneficial for everybody involved.
And just your more last points on this one is, we know that our commercial taxpayers are given a lot of benefits that surrounding communities don't get. They get trash picked up, they get their water and sewer are much lower rates than surrounding communities. So they are getting additional bang for their buck, to a point that surrounding communities that touch us don't, not see. So that is definitely an added bonus to it, and you can chime in.
I was going to say, you're kind of stealing our thunder a little bit, because that's one of the things that we're actually taking a look on, is developing a tax profile.
I was just going to ask you.
Because you're absolutely correct. You can't just look at our tax rates, you also have to take a look at everything else that the city charges. Our city provides a tremendous amount of service to the residents and our business owners, most of it at little to no charge, or significantly less than what a lot of surrounding communities charge. You take a look at, and I know it's a point of contention with people, but you take a look at our water sewer rates that we charge, we're a member of MWRA, and there are, there are a number of communities, we are at the bottom for one of the lowest rates for both water and sanitation, and wastewater. The rates and the amount that we charge property owners in this city, everything is pretty much included into taxes. And so I'm in the process of compiling the data at the mayor's request, looking at our tax profile, and then as we move forward, do we want to take a look at, do we want to start, you know, charging people for certain things, so that the actual users will actually be the ones paying for it, or, you know, let's put this information together so that we can take a look and have all of the facts to see what are the true costs to operate in the city, and that's what we're doing.
Great, and just my last point on this is, the mayor went to the Chamber of Commerce and had a meeting with business members. I had hoped he was going to come here tonight, because he, you know, it's reported in the newspapers that we just push everything through that he presents to us, and I'm sure that's not exactly what was said, but the fact of the matter is, we need to understand what the mayor's long-term goal or forecast is. We're taking half of the wind money next year before it comes in and put it towards the taxes before it's even spent, because we have, we have increased our budget so largely on 12.5 million going to the tax rate the last two years, that we now need to sustain that, and we need to continue to go on that path, if not additionally add more money every year. So before the $30 million arrives on July or so, half of that money is gone off the table before we even discuss it. That's a concern, that we have increased our budget so high, and we have inflated our numbers so largely, that now we need, that we are held to a standard of half and continue to inflate those numbers, so that we can stay where we are, and if not, we're really going to have a problem in the city. So that's a concern. I had hoped the mayor was going to be here to have that discussion like he had with the Chamber of Commerce business owners, but again, we're much having him here, but I think we need to continue to have conversations with him. Thank you.
All set, Counselor? Any more questions? Here's a customary thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Favor?
Other piece?
Counsel Kibon.
As we report it out to the full body, accept any report, place on file.
Seconded, all in favor? All the polls, the ayes have it?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, the ayes have it? Thank you, gentlemen.